And welcome to the committee of the whole meeting for September 17, 2019. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Cameron.
Here.
Carbonaro.
Here.
Dainey.
Here.
Gabrenia, absent.
Hopkins.
Here.
Ranky.
Here.
President Wallace.
Here. First item under our committee meeting this evening is under Community and Economic Development Commission Chairman Gabrenia. She's not available. Again, I will ask Dr. Cameron if he would mind taking over and turning that over to staff.
I would be very happy to do that. So tonight, our item under the committee agenda is the Illinois Cannabis Regulation and Tax Acts Act. And with that, I'd like to turn that over to staff for more discussion.
Thank you, Trustee Cameron. So as you'll recall, back in July, the trustees reviewed recreational cannabis issues and businesses that could operate in the Village of Bartlett. And the trustees asked staff specifically to look at the following information, which was actions of surrounding Illinois municipalities and to pick a similar-sized community in Colorado and provide some background on their experience and how it would and would it possibly impact increasing emergency services and emergency room visits associated with legalized cannabis. I thought I'd start off with Renee Hanlon, our senior planner. She's going to go over the surrounding municipalities and what has happened recently and the Colorado case studies, and then we would move over toward the impacts that our police department might have. So with that, Renee?
Thank you. So the first thing I want to do is kind of update you on the surrounding municipalities since I was here last. St. Charles has not taken a vote yet, but they have directed their staff to prepare the amendment to allow recreational cannabis by special use in the commercial districts. They are planning currently to limit the number to two, one on each side of the river, and they do want to prohibit the use in downtown. South Elgin is continuing to work on their ordinance. They're planning to allow it by special use in all commercial districts. Aurora hasn't taken a vote yet, but the staff there seems that the council is leaning towards allowing it by special use as well. Naperville, as you all probably know, just narrowly voted to prohibit it, but they are planning to do a non-binding referendum and revisit the issue at a later date. Sugar Grove just did email survey, which I thought was pretty interesting with their list of email addresses. So I think it was only about 1,500 people. So it's not a very scientific poll, but they did get their results back, and the no's just barely outpaced the yeses, which they were surprised to find. Alburn seems to be leaning towards allowing it as a special use in their commercial districts. And Kane County, just the, one of the committees just looked at it and decided not to take a vote to prohibit. So I think they are looking at special use in commercial districts in the unincorporated portions of Kane County. But they, that's, there's no vote. That's just the beginning stages of their process. So Colorado case studies. We found a municipality in Colorado with about the same population as Bartlett and similar in that it is a suburban community, a suburban Denver community. It's the Village of North Glenn, and they currently have six dispensaries operating. They allow dispensaries without limitation on the number, but they do have some strict distancing requirements, which has created an environment where they are pretty evenly distributed. And the staff there reported that there have been no big problems. Of course, the police department staff talked to police department there, and when we get to their portion, I'll let them talk to you about what they found. The tax revenue for North Glenn is about eight percent of cannabis sales, and that yields about $600,000 annually to their general budget. Then I also contacted Thornton, Colorado, because they're a larger municipality, but their case is interesting in that initially, they put a moratorium. When cannabis was legalized, they decided that they were going to take a wait-and-see approach. So they waited a few years to see what was happening in other municipalities. In 2016, they decided to allow it. They've limited their licensing to four in the community, and they think that this year they're going to hit the 1 million mark in revenue. And their sales tax generation is 8.75 percent on cannabis there. We also looked at two Denver communities, Denver suburbs, that are about the same size as Bartlett, that decided to prohibit the sale. And we called the staff there just to see what the take was, whether they were planning to allow it at a future date. We talked to Littleton, Colorado, and Brighton. Littleton said that there's never been any regret, and they've never taken the issue up again. Brighton, Colorado, at the time that cannabis was legalized, had a lot of oil and gas revenue. But because of changes with oil and gas laws, I guess, in Colorado lately, that revenue started to diminish. So their council is just starting to revisit the issue, and they think that cannabis sales might be a way to make up for that lost revenue. Okay. We'll turn it over to the police department now for the services.
Thank you, Renee. After the last committee of a whole meeting, President Wallace and the Village Board of Trustees asked the police department to reach out to other police departments just to see what type of potential issues they had with any recreational cannabis dispensaries in their town. He also asked the police department to try to look into some information in regard to emergency room visits in relation to cannabis and their jurisdictions as well, too. Just like community development, we had an opportunity to reach out to three different police departments in the state of Colorado. The first was North Glenn, Colorado. The second was Denver, Colorado. And the last was Lafayette, Colorado. So in regard to North Glenn, Colorado, they have several dispensaries in their town, and I had a chance to actually reach out to their person who's in charge of all their statistics. And she mentioned that with all their dispensaries, they have very minimal problems with their recreational cannabis dispensaries. She informed me between July 1, 2018, and July 1 of 2019. So in a one-year period, they responded to 81 different calls for service, five different theft or shoplifting incidents, three robbery incidents, and 38 business alarm calls at their six recreational cannabis dispensaries. I then reached out to the city of Denver, Colorado, and the reason why I want to reach out to them, they're kind of a model in regard to how they track and they enforce all their different cannabis laws in their dispensaries. And they actually have a specific website with all the information, and that's contained in your packet. But once again, from reaching out to Denver, Colorado, and looking at their annual report in regard to the recreational cannabis, they mentioned that in 2018, the marijuana industry-related crime represented less than half of 1 percent of overall crime in Denver. Out of 139 of these crimes, 93 were burglaries and 16 were thefts. And then lastly, I reached out to Lafayette, Colorado. The reason why I reached out to them, they're a similar-sized police department as well as town as Bartlett, Illinois. So in their particular jurisdiction, they have two recreational cannabis jurisdiction or dispensaries and one medical cannabis dispensary. Once again, they mentioned that their issues with either their medical or their recreational cannabis dispensaries are very minimal. Their detective who keeps track of everything indicated to me that since 2004, there have not been any problems at any of the cannabis dispensaries in the city, and they have experienced one burglary, one robbery, and several false burglar alarms at the cannabis dispensaries. Additionally, there are several jurisdictions here in Illinois that have authorized medical cannabis dispensaries. According to the Lombard, Illinois, Police Department, they recently conducted a survey of municipalities in the northwest suburbs that have medical dispensaries in their jurisdictions, and they found that either they had no calls for service or very minimal calls for service. And the majority of the calls were very similar and echoed what we found out from reaching out to North Glenn, Denver, and Lafayette, Colorado. They had to do with a lot of false burglar alarms. And then also, too, we had an opportunity to do some research in regard to cannabis-related overdoses and emergency room information. So for that, we did some research, taking a look at the state of Oregon, which allows recreational cannabis. We also took a look at Colorado and then also the state of Washington. So in the state of Oregon, the overingestion of cannabis has never exceeded 1 percent of their all emergency room visits. They indicated from their research and statistics that after initial bursts of legalization, their numbers of overingestion have dropped off but are still above pre-legalization levels. While this increase has been concerning, the numbers are expected to continue to stabilize as people learn how to properly consume cannabis, and the novelty wears off. And that kind of information was echoed when I reached out to the jurisdictions in Colorado as well, too. At first, it's like a new novelty that people are trying things out, and especially with the edibles. People don't realize the potency of those, so sometimes they tend to overconsume on those things, and then it kind of catches up to them. In regard to Colorado, there were 9,973 ER visitates, and they used certain codes, and that was the code they used for cannabis. And as I kind of mentioned earlier, edible products accounted for 10.7 of the cannabis-attributed visitates between 2014 and 2016, but only represented 0.32 percent of total cannabis sales in Colorado during that period. And then lastly, we researched the state of Washington, and the number of cannabis exposures reported to one poison control center increased by 158 percent from 146 in 2011 to 378 in 2017. And that's when recreational cannabis became legal in the state of Washington in 2012. And 43 of these exposures involved edibles, and another 17 involved concentrates. I'm now going to turn it over to Chief Ulrich. He's going to talk about other police-related cannabis concerns that we may have, whether the village board allows recreational dispensaries or not.
Thank you. As Deputy Chief Perkell said, whether or not you choose to allow recreational cannabis dispensaries in your town, we're still going to have to deal with some of the impacts that come with legalization. And that's just, not just our police department, but law enforcement agencies throughout the state. So some of the things we were looking at, ways we might be affected, is how it will affect our police canine unit. Our dog Luther is trained to detect all types of drugs, including cannabis, and I'm not sure that he can be, or any drug-detection dog can be untrained for a certain drug. So we're going to have to keep an eye on how that will affect us. We're also concerned about a potential increase in the number of drug-impaired drivers on our roadways and potentially a corresponding increase in injury or fatal crashes related to those impaired drivers. What's problematic for us is there's no real standardized testing procedure for field sobriety testing for cannabis, and they're still working on additional ways to try and allow for field testing similar to like an alcohol field sobriety test or a preliminary breath test that's associated with cannabis. There's nothing out there right now. I understand that there's companies that are racing to try and develop these things, but there's nothing scientifically proven. So it still comes down to, you know, the amount of nanograms of THC in your blood or urine. There's going to need to be increased training opportunities for the detection and testing of these drug-impaired drivers. I don't know if you saw an article in the Daily Herald a week or two ago. I think the Lincoln Hills Police Chief was talking about the need for drug recognition experts in law enforcement and the issue of the state offering, only offering one of these classes each year. So fortunately, we have two officers who are certified, just received certification, as drug recognition experts, but there's many police departments that don't have them, and there's just not enough training to get more officers trained. So that's an issue we see, and that's something we're going to want to stay on top of to work with the state to get more training on that. We also anticipate there might be an initial increase in calls for service in regard to complaints about the smell of cannabis or burnt cannabis. You know, if someone's in their backyard and they're smoking and their neighbor smells it, or they're in their apartment and it's wafting out into the hallway, dealing with those types of complaints. You're not supposed to be able to smoke in a public place, but it's going to be interesting to see what the definition of public place actually is. If you're in your backyard, on your patio, inside your curtilage, is that considered a public place or a private place? I mean, those are things that are going to get worked out in the law, I suppose. And then finally, we're concerned with the workload that's going to be posed on our records section. They're going to have to go and undergo a labor-intensive process of expunging certain criminal offenses related to cannabis. These include municipal ordinance violations as well as state violations. So the Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act requires law enforcement agencies to expunge these certain cannabis-related offenses and sets of timeframes in which these expungements need to be completed. So that's going to be something that we're going to have to stay on top of, and I'm sure that's going to be highly work-intensive as well. So no matter whether you decide to approve a dispensary or not, we're still going to have to deal with some of these issues that are going to pop up with the legalization of recreational cannabis.
And so I think the chief sounded appalled that we will certainly have some ramifications in dealing with the state law just in our day-to-day operations. What's before you is really the zoning question tonight. And staff has laid out a spectrum of options, A, B, and C, that really range from allowing to requiring special use before getting it. And I think we have certainly the ability to do any of the options that you're comfortable with. We look at a number of the maps that I think work as for you that show some of those restrictions in terms of where the distances would allow those zones to be available. But certainly, the question tonight is the zoning, and I'm sure we'll be talking about how we're going to be addressing the ramifications of the state cannabis law throughout our budget discussion and the use of it. I have a question for the chief.
How much is one of these trainings that you speak of that's only once a year for an officer to attend?
I don't, I don't have that offhand. I'm not sure if it's included as part of our regular training or if there's an associated fee with that, but I could find out.
Okay.
So Deputy Chief Durbin said it's through our training unit, through Niemurt, so that's part of our normal fees that we pay each year. There are supposed to be fees associated with recreational cannabis that come back for training of law enforcement. I think the legislature is still trying to figure out how that's all going to work. But to your point, we're staying, the Illinois Chiefs of Police Association is really active in this. A lot of what I've included, they've since come out with some of their concerns as well, so we're staying on top of that, and we're going to move forward and pay attention to all the issues as it pertains as a state as well.
You said that currently we have two officers trained. How many officers would need to be trained, in your opinion, once the law takes effect?
That's a good question. I mean, two is better than none. Most departments have none right now, from what I've been seeing in the paper. So we're fortunate to have two, so we're on the plus side of that. You know, as we move forward, too, it depends on where those officers are at in their career. Do they retire, and then those skills go with them? So we're going to want to keep having some type of succession plan to keep people trained and get more people trained as we move forward. But it's all based on the availability of that training.
Thank you.
Chief, I guess I'm still a little confused about this records section. Isn't this something you'll have to do regardless of whether we bring, allow cannabis into the village or not? Right? Okay.
Yeah, I was just talking about the impacts of the legalization of cannabis, regardless of whether you allow a dispensary or not. Those are all of the concerns we're still going to have to deal with.
Okay, all right.
Where do we go from here?
Um, yeah, well.
I mentioned at the last committee meeting, I think one of our best options is to have a referendum and let the voters decide. I still believe that is our best option, unless if someone wants to suggest a different avenue.
Where would that referendum take place?
I don't know if you, deadlines and whatnot, and there's a limit on number of questions, public questions, but that's one possibility. I would suggest that if you're going to do a referendum, that you pass ordinances not allowing it in the interim until a referendum would pass, rather than rely on the general provisions of your zoning ordinance that says, that say that if it's not expressly a permitted use or a special use, then it is a prohibited use. I think, given the major changes in the law, that's, that's not a safe alternative. I wouldn't suggest relying on that, albeit it could be a short period of time if you could really get on a ballot by April. There's some tight timelines for getting the question written. It's got to be translated into Spanish in three counties, and there's things to do. I don't know the timelines right now. If it isn't that, it would be the fall election. So we can work toward getting a question together and then see what the applicable timeframe would be, but my recommendation, unless the board says let's, sure they want to do it, regardless of the referendum question, you wouldn't go the other way, allow it and then not allow it depending on a referendum, because you'll have vested rights of, you know, store owners and things you'd have to deal with. So you couldn't go the reverse of that. You would say no if the referendum passes and then the board says okay. And it's an advisory referendum. It's not a binding referendum.
So in essence, what we could do at that point in time is we'll just take a wait-and-see attitude.
Right. But in the interim, I would suggest if you want to wait to see what that advisory referendum shows, that you pass an ordinances, whatever.
Not allowing it.
Right. Prohibiting it. And then if the referendum gives you a clear mandate of some sort, I don't know that that'll be the case, it'll still be up to the board based on what those results are to say, okay, I see that as a mandate or not, and now here's what I think we should do. And then you're back to, you know, I don't know that the question could be so broad that you're going to get all input. You're still going to come down to if there were, you know, the referendum showed that most people favored it. The question will still come back to, okay, just in the commercial district, should we limit the number? Do you allow, you know, smoking at those loc, you know, recreational cannabis at those locations? You know, there's still other things in the law. There's issues with respect to sales of the edible product as well. So you still would have some decision-making, and I don't think you're going to be able to pose a question with some, you know, questions where people are going to give you all that kind of input. I think it's more of a general, do you want it or you don't?
Does the law, does the law state or talk about if Streamwood or Hannover Park or East Dundee or a community that approved it, could people have it delivered to their homes in Bartlett? Could they purchase it and have it delivered?
I don't know. If medical, no. They have to buy it from a dispensary, a licensed dispensary.
Why can't the referendum question be something as simple as, are you in favor of the recreational use and sales of cannabis in the Village of Bartlett in this story?
I think it could.
And then it would become the board's responsibility, if we wanted to draft an ordinance or whatever the case may be, or restrict the areas, then that would become our responsibility.
That's what I'm saying. I don't think you could have a much more complicated question than that and get a lot of feedback from the referendum, because I think, A, it confuses it, and B, you don't get 10 bites at an apple with sub-questions. It's, it's going to be a question like that. And then, then if that result showed that the majority of people were in favor, you would still have to grapple with and deal with and direct staff relative to how many were, and that's assuming it's, people are even in favor. They may not.
And Brian, the, it's not just the, there's not just the question about the sale, but also the growing, the manufacturing, the extruding, or whatever it is that is done. That's also another question.
Right.
Do you want to have that kind of manufacturing process done out here?
There's all kinds of permutations of this that I think would be beyond a question for the ballot. So you still have, you know, you have to get past the first question, do most people favor it? And is that a, is it a clear enough mandate that you're comfortable now going to that next day, step? The impacts are going to be there anyway. Revenues are uncertain.
Do we have any, I mean, we've been talking about this a little bit. Do we have any, anybody even inquiring about putting one of these in Bartlett?
We had one feeler, yes.
Generally?
And from what I've heard, they've sent something out to quite a few municipalities.
Yeah, it's probably a blast.
They're looking for bites.
There's a big investment to even apply at the state level.
Yeah. So if I did my math correctly, North Glenn, which is the same size, has six dispensaries and had 600,000 in revenue, and they get 8 percent cut on the sales, so that's $7.5 million worth of sales in six dispensaries a town the size of ours. That's a lot of product, I would guess. And that's a lot of odor. I couldn't imagine where they put these facilities without neighbors freaking out about how stinky it is. So I'm still a little bit mystified as to where anything like this would go in Bartlett.
Is that city allowing it commercial and industrial, though?
This is, this is allowing just the dispensary, right? Six dispensaries, 600,000, yeah.
Because I see some of these cities that do districts, and so like in our, if we did it with limiting it to industrial, then you'd have basically two districts in Bartlett. So you'd have only two facilities.
Blue Heron and Brewster Creek. That's where the medical is at right now, is in Brewster Creek, correct?
Correct, yes.
Yeah.
And it is a special use. We do have distance requirements associated with that. So the cultivation center has a distance requirement from a school, a daycare, and a residential zoning district of 2,500 feet, and then the dispensary has one with 1,500 feet of a distance requirement.
So if we did nothing, the likelihood is people are going to go to these other cities, purchase it, bring it back home. We still potentially have issues with traffic violations. We still have issues with, with people doing whatever they're going to do, and yet we have no revenue coming in from it whatsoever. I guess that becomes the issue as well, is that we, we have no ref, we have no revenue, but we have all the, the potential downside, but we have none of the upside to it, so.
Chief Ulrich mentioned additional training, which costs money, so.
Well, they're going to have to do that anyway, I would think, you know?
That's Trustee Cameron's point. If I was leaning anyway, it would be the most restrictive, allow it a special use in the industrial zoning districts and not in our downtown, not in commercial, and limit it to two facilities.
I agree.
That would be. That would be my option. I would still like to know what the residents think in a referendum question. And if no one applies for these applications and we don't put them in and we get the referendum question back, then we can go either way, so.
What is the cost to the village to put out a referendum? Does it cost us anything? You don't, you don't know?
Some costs associated with it, but I don't know. I couldn't venture a ballpark on what it would be. I mean, it's not staggering, but.
When's the last time we did a referendum question?
1990 for the police station?
Electric power plant.
1990 for the police station?
Probably.
Probably the power plant.
I mean, I, I don't know if the referendum's gonna do us much good. I mean, there's 41,000 people in town. Okay, so 40,000 are registered voters. I don't think there's anybody here to get more than 3,000 or 4,000 votes. It's about 8 or 9% turnout. I'm not sure what kind of direction we're gonna get from that.
I think the people that are paying attention would wanna voice their opinion. And impromptu, I've talked to probably over 100 people that I don't personally know very well. And it's about 50/50 in their answers. So, I would.
There seems to be a, I was reading in an AARP magazine that came to the house recently. Unfortunately, I'm getting those magazines. And they had a pretty interesting article about how it's been transpiring in Florida. And with the elderly population, the need has, and the use has substantially gone up in Florida. So, I think as we continue to see baby boomers age, it's something that, even though the medical science and research isn't supporting it as much as it should because it's been illegal drugs, they haven't been doing research on it. As it becomes legal, there'll be more research done. As it researches done, if it proves some of the points that, that there's anecdotal evidence that says it seems to be working, if that's proven point, then more and more people are going to use it. And that seems to be the case in Florida, at least from the article I was reading.
It'll be interesting to see if the, there's a decrease in alcohol sales.
Yeah, I don't know.
Trusty Cameron, I also get the same magazine, by the way, okay?
You could double AARP.
And my take on that was is that, you know, seniors and whatnot, myself included, but, you know, they're doing it more for pain, to alleviate pain.
Well, that's part of it, no doubt.
My wish was on that, when I read the article, I didn't know if that was being purchased for recreational use or if it was actually purchased as medical marijuana.
Most of it was medical, from what the article seemed to imply. But people were using it for sleep remedies, they were using it for pain control, and some eye disorders, that sort of thing. Glaucoma, for instance.
I was gonna bring that magazine down today and show you, but I didn't want anybody to really think I was that old.
I don't either.
I have a tendency to agree with Trusty Hopkins on this, as being the restrictive option in the industrial zones. That would be my opinion. We've already got a medical one approved out there. I can't fathom any business along 59 or downtown especially that would want that smell or odor or even, maybe, I don't know what I'm talking about because I've never been to one. But, but I couldn't imagine there being one downtown or even on 59 just because of the, there's no real freestanding buildings that they would be in. I mean, I've seen some of these locations and, and they're large locations. The only ones I've seen, obviously, are the medical ones. And they're larger locations and they're set off by themselves. So, I can see how they may get away with that and not be a nuisance to the community. But again, I think, I think we're kinda burying our heads in the sand if we don't think it's gonna be prevailing in the area. So, I would have a tendency to agree with Trusty Hopkins on the most restrictive in the industrial area if we do anything at all.
As far as the smell goes, I was in Vail, Colorado, and they had some shops. And I couldn't get into one. They, they keep them pretty locked. You've got, you've almost got a buzz in or something, I don't know. But there was no smell. I mean, there was no smell permeating outside the building that you would smell. I don't know. I don't know if there's smell or not.
So, that might be a red herring.
Could I just get a clarification, Trusty Hopkins? When you said that you wanted to limit it to two facilities, you are referring to dispensaries?
Correct.
Okay.
It was, to my recollection on the, on the medical, were we receiving, we weren't receiving any type of tax benefits on a, what are they called, harvesting or whatever the cultivation? I don't think there's any tax revenue revolving around cultivation.
That was my recollection.
I think that's correct.
Now, are you limiting the cult-, you can see from the map, it's very limited. Are you limiting that as well, or no?
Also.
Sale question and the cultivation question.
It's, it's two different issues, yeah.
I think B is what we're talking about, which means that the same ordinance that we have or special use we have in place for the.
Medical. Okay, so just on the dispensaries, limiting to two?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think one in each business park, I think is.
Okay, that, okay.
I know, I believe I read that DuPage County, and I'm not sure, we didn't get any feedback on DuPage and Cook. We just got the Kane feedback. I don't believe they voted yet, but they were preparing three separate ordinances for their unincorporated, DuPage was. One was a no altogether, another one was allowing it, and then there was a third option. I don't remember what it was. Yeah. So, I mean, not right now is the time to speak up if we're, I'm sure we have more time for this. So, from a timing standpoint, this could probably be decided in first meeting in November. Or second meeting in November.
Would you like us to draft that, what we're hearing from you, for you to look at? So, you can look at the, the, um, the actual zoning language?
Do you wanna bring it back to committee?
Yeah, bring it back to committee.
Bring it back. I, I think we still need some more discussion because we haven't heard from everybody and we have one trustee missing this evening. But one of the additional things that I would love to find out is the, the pace at which the police environment is, that we believe can get to a level of consistency in how they're going to be detecting this. There's no, is it 10 years, or is it two years down the road? Is it? I mean, it doesn't have anything to do with our municipality because obviously you're gonna have people driving through town that are high, but.
I think it's still problematic in places like Colorado where it's the level of proof for driving while impaired, while under the influence of cannabis, is, is so hard to prove that when there's a combination of alcohol and cannabis, they just charge it under DUI for alcohol. So, it's not just an Illinois problem, it's a nationwide problem. And I think it's still in the works to try and figure out the best way to, to detect it and also to prosecute.
I have a feeling as to how that, I read somewhere about the swab, that they're testing.
Yeah, Carol Stream is doing some testing with a, with a swab. It's not, excuse me, I'm not sure that it's scientifically accepted yet. It's still a test. But it's also not at the level of the nanograms that the state law would limit. So, I think they're testing at a, at a higher level and the state is lower and what they're using to test can't detect the lower levels yet, from my understanding of it. I haven't looked that much into it yet, but I read the article that was in the paper a few years ago, or a few weeks ago, and that's kinda what I took from it.
Could I ask, should we begin drafting the advisory question? And should we begin drafting the ordinances for the interim, which would prohibit it in the different zones based on the direction we're getting here?
I, I think that would be a pretty good idea to get a rough draft. I also think that from the people that I've spoken to, in general public, there's a good percentage of them that are indifferent and they'd really like to know if it'll make a dent in what they're paying in taxes. So, I mean, that could be a benef-, that could be a deciding factor on how they're gonna answer that referendum because they know it's coming. So, some of them, some of the people that I speak to are like, it's coming, why not get the 300,000 or 400,000 or whatever it is that you're gonna get from tax revenue?
And it's interesting because a lot of the things that I've been reading from the professional organizations that we turn to for questions like that, they've really said, you know, it's kinda, you can guess. You can make an educated guess, but this is bringing an industry that has been in the shadow out into the daylight and it's hard to get a firm number on what that might be. Some of the ranges that I have seen, you know, we're on the, from what we had been thinking about was very conservative. And I have, you know, people say, oh, it's gonna be way more than that. I'm, I'm kind of skeptical of that. Not only, and, and these numbers, you know, these, these wonderful, you know, magic numbers that are very robust usually come from the people who want the license to build those facilities in your community. So, I, I am leery of the source of those numbers. And I am also leery of the, of being too optimistic about those numbers of having a dent on people's taxes because of all those other things that we have to address. But also that Bartlett is not one of those first-tier communities that have the medical dispensary already. So, there's going to be a first wave of licenses that are going to be distributed, and then there'll be a second one. And I think it would be, in, in some senses, that that's nice because we get the luxury of seeing the impact of those second, of those licenses in those communities and what they experience. But on the other hand, it would put a dent in that revenue that we would be able to capture because we're the second tier. So, it's, whatever number we give you, I think would just be.
A guess.
Guess.
That makes sense.
And I can't imagine a location in Bartlett is gonna generate anywhere near the sales that a location in, for example, South Elgin on Randall Road would generate. I, I understand there's a draw for this stuff, but no one puts McDonald's in an industrial park.
Yeah.
Nobody does that, and there's good reasons. So, I don't think we should be seduced by the potential tax revenue. Because I don't know that it's necessarily there.
I think with the limitations you're talking about, and I'm certainly not disagreeing at all. But it is gonna negatively impact revenues, goes without saying because there's, the industrial park isn't the same kind of foot traffic and everything else, or vehicle traffic.
I agree.
But, you know, you would get some revenues, it would be a reduced factor. And it may be a service that people want.
What about the ancillary businesses that'll pop up around these, like snack shops and stuff? That could drive some revenue.
Video game.
Cheeto sales.
Cheeto truck.
There you go.
Just to clarify, for continuing this discussion, I'm hearing we'd like a timeline for what a referendum question would be, and also some language on the prohibit, on the prohibit.
I did just do one for a park district where it was a tax question, and the timing is brutal. You have to get the counties to approve of your question, translate it into Spanish and then other languages that cook in the different counties. It does take time and it costs money. And there's some limitations on public question, spending village dollars. You certainly couldn't be a proponent one way or the other. We're not proposing to be. We're proposing to say, what do you guys want? But you're limited to, you know, factual information and things of that nature, so. There's some issues with respect. We'll figure out the timeline with those deadlines. So, the statute says you have to have your question not more than, you know, 90 days before this date. And we'll figure that out, see what our, how doable getting it on the March or April, or rather, April ballot would be.
Good. Is the information that we receive from this referendum question going to be useful for the board at all? It sounds like, well, I've drafted referendum questions before and they have to be very simple or people don't understand them.
Right.
So, is that, the data that we receive, the votes, is that gonna be helpful in any way? Especially given that it looks like we're headed towards voting for an option anyway right now. So, why would we invest the, the staff time and energy when we've already made a decision? That's true. I mean, I, I understand and I, I think the voters ought to have a say in how government runs. It's not, not trendy these days, but alas, that's the system we have. But we're making a decision in the short term before any referendum would, would hit the books.
Well, you kinda get an involuntary referendum after you pass something.
Right, 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 right. We're gonna hear, we're gonna hear.
Well, that's a good point.
It's a complicated, and it's, it's a complicated issue that you're either gonna follow and understand or you're not gonna follow and understand. And everybody who wants marijuana is gonna say yes regardless of any of the details. And converse, too.
Point you have, the, and the issue, you know, if, if we're restricting it to two business parks in isolated areas, you know, what's the purpose? Why spend the money on a referendum? I mean, if this is the direction, you know, the board wants to go in. So, alright, so.
And I think we talked about the question being vague enough that, and people can understand it. If the mayor's informal poll is at all indicative of what people are thinking, you're, you're probably ending up with something 50/50 and it's back in your lap with these types of questions, anything.
Yeah.
What happens if they say no?
Again, it's probably gonna be 51/49, you know, something along those lines. And what does that tell you? I don't doubt you're gonna get a clear mandate, and if you are, it's because somebody has an interest in pushing for it.
Well, let's, let's assume that it's 70% no.
Okay.
Oh, boy, now we have to ban it. Well, if you've got a business or two businesses, they now have vested right to the continuation.
Yeah, I don't think it can go that direction.
Yeah. You know, we could amortize them out, but it's gonna take time and give the investment.
Yeah.
It's.
So, you're okay with drafting the, the idea of putting it on the referendum? Because I think you're gonna get outvoted anyway.
Is this the direction the board wants to go?
Yeah, I think so.
I think we'll have one more discussion, probably at committee.
So. You, I wasn't clear on your example. You said, what if 70% say no? I agree. If you were to go with what we're talking about, you can't go backwards, right? So, you're saying, I still think, what is that gonna tell us? And we, we can say with these limited rules, we could live with it and accomplish what we want to accomplish. So, that's the decision.
And it sounds like, too, that there's no interest at all in permitting this on Route 59 or Lake Street or any of the major roadways.
So, just a straw poll, we're voting no, no on any referendum drafting?
Sure. Correct.
And so, let's go ahead and draft some general ideas about industrial park only.
So, okay, so we're gonna draft, rather than a question, we're gonna draft restrictions to our zoning ordinance for what we're talking about.
We've already got most of it there with the medical use.
Yeah.
It'll be about a carbon copy.
But that's direction, that's the kinda direction we need where we can put it in amendments to the zoning ordinance.
I think this discussion was extremely great because of the fact, I walked in here this evening and I was definitely totally against it. I, the option I wanted was any recreational marijuana in the village. And we had some discussion up here and listening to what we have now with the restrictions that we're putting in, isolating it to the business parks. That makes more sense because I wanted to avoid exactly what you said, Route 59, Lake Street, the downtown center. And that's what I had envisioned as far as the sale of recreational marijuana. And if it's exclusively earmarked to the, to the business parks, and you're right, we're probably not going to generate that much revenue from it, sales tax dollars. So, you know, I'm becoming more and more convinced that the concept and the idea that you came up with makes, makes sense.
Alright. We're good?
With that, is all we have under the Unit and Economic Development.
Thank you, Trusty Cameron for stepping in. I appreciate it. And finally, building and zoning, Chairman Hopkins.
Thank you, President Wallace.
Thank you, President Wallace. We have one item on our agenda tonight and it's the Downtown Zoning Overlay District. With that, I'll turn it over, but just make one comment. This study was paid for by a grant from the RTA.
Yes, it was, 100%.
Okay.
Yes.
I like hearing things like that.
Good. So, we're trying to continue the vision of our downtown TOD plan and with that, we applied for and were granted a RTA grant consisting of $20,000. Like Trustee Hopkins stated, it was 100% covered for this, the formation of this Form-Based And the, this grant was to develop and create a downtown zoning overlay district. And this was drafted by the RTA's consultant, Leslie Oberholzer with CODA Metrics and in conjunction with a 12-member steering committee that consisted of residents, business owners, commission members, an elected official, and staff. And also included input from an open house that we held on June 10th. And with that, we have a PowerPoint tonight. Leslie is here to present the PowerPoint and to tell you all about what Form-Based Code is. So, with that, Leslie.
Well, the cannabis is a tough act to follow, Leslie. Tell you what.
Sorry.
Leslie.
This is more fun.
Chick-fil-A on here, though.
So, let me apologize in advance, the fonts didn't translate very well to you, but--
You got pictures.
So, I just have a little quick presentation, y'all. I assume have a copy of the draft available to you and I just want to kind of give you a good sense of our process and what's included in this draft ordinance. So, as Roberta was saying, we had a fantastic steering committee, one of the best that I've worked with, and we did meet, I think, probably five or six times to discuss a lot of detail and to come up with the draft that you have in front of you. Part of the start of this process was to discuss not only the goals of this actual overlay, but also what were the results that staff wanted to see. And so, we looked at the TOD plan, of course, and the idea behind it is to implement the TOD plan, the idea of kind of a walkable mixed-use downtown. But also what we wanted to do was to draft regulations that were very clear, concise, easy to follow, that would encourage development downtown, that would make it easy for things to happen downtown, make it easy for the right thing to happen in the downtown, and that the results would then be very high quality, much like the development that you've got right now. Just a quick overview of the table of contents, there are seven sections in this overlay. The overlay will be part of Section 9 in, and it changed, changed all the number, changed all the numbers, that's so weird. It did not translate very well. But, what we're proposing to do is to sort of reorganize Chapter 9 within your existing code that currently has the planned unit development and the planned development section in it and make this another article within it. So, that's what the 9C designation that you see in there. So, the seven sections are the establishment of this overlay, the administration of the overlay, which is pretty simple and straightforward, and I'll get to that in a minute, a set of building regulations that would establish building form, pretty straightforward building form, some building design and site design regulations, and then a little bit about development of large sites and how they could be broken up into streets and blocks and potentially have multiple development types within them, for example, commercial and residential combined on the same lot. And so, I'm just going to kind of go over that really quickly with you. So, the overlay itself utilizes your existing zoning designations. So, the zoning is not changing for all of these parcels within the downtown. The zoning will remain in place, however, the overlay will replace the building form and the design requirement. So, the uses will remain in place as they are in the current code and I believe staff is working on revisions to that, too, and so that will be a separate approval process. So, that's the establishment of the overlay. It essentially takes all of the B District and the PDs in the downtown and sort of cuts out any kind of single-family, so this is not addressing any single-family residential that you have in the edges of downtown or within the area of the TOD. Wow, that does not look great. So, what we did was we took that outline of the overlay and we divided it into four subareas. So, if you can kind of see, I really am sorry, this looks just terrible, I should have used my own--
We can see it on here, we've got it.
You've got it in the, in the actual overlay.
Yep.
So, there are four subareas that are defined, the purple, the dark purple right around the train station, right in this area, has a very clear character definition of walkable, commercial, mixed-use. So, we have a lot of restaurants, retail, and so on in that sort of central core area. Then the light blue on the edges is what we're calling the downtown edge and this is places like where the new chiropractic office is. Those are not so, you know, storefronty, not necessarily restaurants and retail, although restaurants and retail are allowed in those areas, but they do have a little bit more landscape, a little bit softer, and they're transitioned to the residential areas. So, the light blue being a transition to the residential areas. And then the purple being downtown residential, which you've already got some of, quite a bit of, and then some new that might be happening. And then what we call the commercial corridor, which is the area to the south. And so, this is, this is a little bit more sort of regular commercial, single-use commercial, maybe with drive-through facilities and so on. We have a series of illustrations. The inclusion of these images were selected, we spent a lot of time in our steering committee selecting these images, to convey the idea behind what is expected in these locations, high-quality development with the scale that's appropriate for the community as a whole and the downtown area. So, I'm just going to kind of key through those because you can see those. So, in terms of the administration of the overlay, it would use your existing administrative site plan review procedure that you have in place already in Chapter 13. We have amended that a little bit to require a pre-submital conference for any development, meaning that anybody that was planning to develop within the overlay would be required to come and sit down with staff. And that is simply so that staff can kind of go over what the requirements would be and make it a little bit easier once they develop their application. So, they've already learned what they need to include in their application. Planned unit development in terms of the way that it's written in your current code would not be permitted within the overlay because that would sort of supersede the overlay and make it, make it less useful. However, we have created two relief procedures, a minor design exception and a major design exception. The idea behind this minor design exception is that it would be a part of the administrative site plan approval process. So, this is for easy dimensional changes. So, if somebody is not quite meeting the one or two foot or a small percentage, that they could just get that approved very easily because it's generally going to meet the conceptual requirements of the regulations. And then a major design exception would be something that it would be along the lines of what you might use a planned development for. It's something very major that provides relief and that process would be approved by the ZBA. And we have a series of conditions and ways that the ZBA would review any of those changes. So, administratively, the idea is to make it as quick and easy as possible to do the right thing, which is why these regulations are pretty detailed. So, the way that the regulations are organized is there's a series of building regulations and they're all written in table form so that they're pretty easy to figure out. The regulations are all along the left-hand side and then each one of those four subareas that I mentioned are across the top. So, the regulations are a little bit different for each one of the subareas. All of these regulations are keyed to illustrations on an adjacent page and the idea behind this first set is to cite the building appropriately so that your neighbor, you have some sense of where your neighbor is going to cite their building, so making it as predictable as possible to create that kind of synergy between those buildings in each one of the subareas. So, sighting location, parking location, and then height is addressed with this first set of tables. And the second part of this, that is, what makes this more unique than just a conventional zoning code is we have facade regulations. And again, these facade regulations are pretty straightforward. They generally have requirements for a certain amount of glass on the front of the building so you don't have big blank walls along your major streets, that you have entrances along the street. So, again, in terms of implementing the downtown plan, which is all about walkability and having that permeability between the street and the sidewalk and the inside of the building, these are very simple regulations to help achieve that, to have that relationship there. And then we have a little bit about facade divisions and sort of breaking down the facade into scale. So, this table is all about the facades, again, keyed to the elevations and those elevations, those sort of diagrammatic elevations, one for each subarea, is just the very basic pieces that we're aiming to implement with the building form regulations. The third section is about the roofs. And so, basically what we're doing is we're designating the building form and where those buildings go, a little bit about the facades, and then how the building is capped. When I do image preference surveys across the country, one of the major things that people are concerned about is the fact that a lot of modern buildings just sort of end. It makes them feel unfinished and have less detail. And so, the idea of creating a series of roof types, and it pretty much addresses all of them so that there is some kind of a cap on the buildings, that also makes them feel a little bit more traditional even though you can do a fairly modern building within these regulations. A key aspect of the building design regulations is building materials and this is something that staff already negotiates through your PD processes. This is how you get high-quality development. Most developers are used to dealing with building design and building materials. And so, what we've done is we've created a fairly clear, well, clearer than this, it's clear in the actual draft, set of acceptable building materials. This is something that our steering committee talked about a lot. I think we probably spent two meetings discussing all of the different materials, what they were and how important they would be for the building design. So, we have a series of major facade materials, which is the majority of the facade, and then a series of minor facade materials that can be used for details and interest. The minor facade materials obviously is a smaller portion of the facade and is very flexible in terms of what can happen. So, you can see that list is quite a bit longer. We have a series of prohibited materials because these were materials that the group as a whole felt like we didn't want to see. And again, these are just on street facades, not on the rear, just on the street facades where they're the most visible. And then, of course, there's a series of accent design and accent materials that could be used for details, columns, and so on. The building design section has a long list of typical design guideline items and so you can look through those. I'm not going to really go over all of those. Two of the key ones that really influence the design of the buildings is balconies and having a principal entrance and some kind of detail over the entrance to draw your attention. It's not just sort of a puncture in the facade, it's got a roof over it or a stoop over it or some windows on the sides of it or something like that. There are exceptions written for almost all of the design elements. So, if you want to do something different from the balconies that we have defined in the regulations, you can, you just need to go through the process with the ZBA for the major design exception. So, again, if they want to do something fairly quickly and want to do the right thing and follow all the regulations, it's an administrative site plan review. If they want to change it up, then they can go to the ZBA and ask for a major design In terms of parking, you have been negotiating parking with your planned developments already and so this is a table of minimum parking space requirements that meets what you have already been negotiating. We also have in there a series of parking credits for different types of existing parking, like on-street parking, that you can use to count towards your parking requirements. So, there's also an alternative solution, again, that can be used for the major design exception, that would allow for somebody to come forward with something. Again, this is a TOD area and so the idea is that there are fewer parking requirements for almost everything within the area. It's meant to be more walkable. You actually have quite a bit of parking in your downtown already. The last section is called Major Site Plans and the idea behind this is you've got one major development area or potential redevelopment area. Right now, it has been, it's being fixed up, so this probably wouldn't apply, but you could maybe use this in the future as well. And the idea here is that we've given streets and blocks that would be walkable and open space typologies so that if you had a larger parcel that would redevelop, that there would be a requirement for creating some kind of small park space similar to what you have up here across the street from the station area in that area because there isn't anything right now, no open space down there right now. And so, this whole section, the last section in the code, would queue up a series of these regulations that would be pretty easy to follow, similar to what you, again, might negotiate with the planned development, but they're right there for staff to use more easily and for the developer to understand more easily. So, that's a very quick run-through fully because it's so late.
It's a lot of information.
It's a lot.
I'm curious as to how these different orders were drawn for the four different districts.
That's excellent.
What's a reference point to those? I'm looking here. Yeah, I'm curious as to how those were drawn.
So, it's--
Is it existing there now?
Yes, very much so.
And then like complementing what's existing there?
Right.
Okay.
So, this is a, this is a process that I use, I call it place-based coding for writing any kind of zoning code within any municipality, is to kind of identify how those spaces are being used, what the building form is right now. And so, the definition of where the subarea 2 is, is really the locations where you've got converted houses being used, there's more office uses in those locations, there's more landscape around those buildings and that's what people are used to seeing. We did sort of revise that throughout the process with the steering committee, but to keep that sort of level of landscape area around the building to make it a little bit softer and to make it more of a transition for those residential neighborhood, residential developments behind it or the houses behind it, actually. Otherwise, it is based on sort of the uses that are in place, the existing districts and the building form that's in place.
So, I'm just, the reason why I ask is if there's a, there's a difference between downtown core and downtown edge and some of these locations that are in Area 2, downtown edge, especially going up Railroad Avenue, find a developer at some point. You'd want those to blend the same look as your downtown core, which would expand the core, right?
You mean to the, to the west?
To the west, yeah.
So, the issue with those parcels is they're pretty small and pretty shallow and so that was, that was one of the considerations in place for that. Now, again, the uses can still be, but it could also be modified if you felt that was appropriate. It could also be modified in the future with an amendment.
I think it's a good start to putting some framework around how downtown will look 15, 20 years from now.
Sure.
And having control around it.
But I have a question about that because now we go to SubArea 4, an area that I'm very, very, very accustomed to and familiar with, and yet we persist because of our lovely TOD plan to put--
Pardon me for what?
To get to it right here, that we continue to, on page 39, we continue to put an illustration of a one potential site layout with a road going right through the shopping center that a man has just now-- a man has just now invested millions of dollars in to change and to upgrade. And I don't understand the mentality of that and why we're even progressing with that and putting that there at all. I just, I don't think it's right. I don't think it's right to the person who's invested in that. I think it should be taken out and I don't see the point in pursuing that.
I didn't even notice that.
So I will say that, one, on page 6 of the regulating plan, that can be developed as commercial corridor as it is. That's pretty close to what it would be. But then if there were to be any redevelopment to happen on that site, the idea behind this master plan site development is that they could then introduce, if they were to redevelop, it's an if, that it would give them another route to incorporate apartment buildings. It's really sort of more developability on that site in the future. But again, we were.
Does Mr. Rafidiya even know about this? I venture to say he has no clue.
He probably does not, but this map that you're referring to on page 39 was taken directly out of the TOD plan and that's.
Right, which I've objected to since its very inception and I don't understand it.
But as Leslie said, it's only for a recommendation for redevelopment, complete redevelopment. And Mr. Rafidiya's plans are not doing a complete redevelopment, he's doing facade treatments and parking lot lights.
I think that's a conceptual thing. When you're looking at redevelopment, you're looking at 30,000-foot view. If this ever happens, this is what should happen.
It's a recommendation.
Not what's ever going to happen.
Well, and it's one way it should happen.
Yeah, one way it should happen.
There'd be other ways.
There'd be many other ways besides putting a street where there really doesn't need to be a street. Even in a redevelopment, I don't agree that there should be a street there. There's a street right on Bertow.
Let's say if a tornado came through and blew all that down, what would you do with it? That's what they're saying.
Exactly.
They would certainly want to put a street all the way through to Railroad if nothing was there.
There already is a street there on Bertow, right next to it.
May I say one thing? Just interrupt. Our superintendent, Grounds, is here. He has to start at 5:00 in the morning. Kevin, it's okay with him if you want to leave, all right? Okay, all right. Try to get you a little help there, buddy. All right, thanks. Sorry.
Anything else?
Let's talk a little bit about the permitted minor design exceptions, 3B, page 9. Up to a 10% increase in total impervious coverage. So what, in terms of coverage, what are we talking from and to? 60% to a 70%, 40% to a 50%?
So the idea is that there would be an allowance for additional coverage beyond what is in the actual regulations in the building and site regulations.
So a three-foot variance from a minimum yard requirement seems to me to be relatively minor and that's appropriate for an administrative exception. But 10% could be significant and that seems like a big number to me. I'd be more comfortable with a more modest number there, especially when flooding can be a real issue. It doesn't mean that the village board can't grant that variance, but I'm concerned, and it's not that I don't trust the staff. It's not about the staff. It just seems like 10% is a big.
And flip it around and make it a ZBA thing.
I guess 3% or 5%.
Yeah, I guess we have to run the numbers to see if 5% is appropriate. You know, I don't want to be arbitrary, but it seems like 10% equally is arbitrary.
I think it's a really good start.
Really good start. Thank you.
Yeah.
I can tell you, as I think I mentioned before, when Moore Brewing made their application, when they first came in, they had used materials that were actually prohibited for the major design. And when we told them about this form-based code, they completely changed their materials and upgraded it to a brick and a higher quality that's currently in this code. So it's already, without even being approved, helped one project.
Fantastic. That's good news.
So we'll send this on to the zoning board of appeals for further review and to do the required public hearing.
Got it.
Thank you. That's all we have under building and zoning.
Thank you, Chairman Hopkins. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
By Trustee Camer, seconded by Trustee Hopkins. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Camer?
Yes.
Carbonell?
Yes.
Deanie?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.